I call the order of regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees in Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, March 7, 2016. Please stand for invocation led by trustee Aaron Wilson and pledge of allegiance led by trustee Aaron Wilson.
Heavenly Father, please guide us in seeing the positive that can come from negative and the exciting opportunity that's present each and every conflict that's before us. Share with us your wisdom and divine guidance so that we may always stay clear and focused on a path you set for us and for the good of this community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk take a roll call, please.
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present. The attorney is present.
Thank you, Lori. We have a quorum. Next is approval of minutes from February 16, 2016, board meeting and February 16, 2016 Regional Planning Commission Initiative Presentation. I entertain a motion to approve.
So may I?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasure report, Tom Yeo.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasure report reflects what the village received in motor fuel tax in the amount of $51,224.73 and bill of Machesney Road funds in the amount of $300,742.22, bringing total of all funds as of February 29 through $7,286,572.22. A detailed copy of the treasure report is available on the table at the back of the meeting room. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I entertain a motion to accept the treasure's report.
Summit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion or changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasure's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications, Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. First thing this evening, I just wanted to report that the village received a letter of gratitude and congratulations to the village and to all those who contributed to the Harlem School District efforts in raising over $706,000 to fund the installation of the turf field at Harlem High School. They took pledges and they have now received over 95% of those pledges. So they're very excited and they wanted to extend their thanks to the community and to the village officials. This evening, we're excited to welcome Tim Demke from the Rockford Park District and John Grohl from the Rockford Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, who have some good news for us.
Thank you and good evening, Tim Demke from the Park District and John Grohl. Wait, excuse me. I'm supposed to hit that button? How'd that work?
I can follow instructions, see what I mean. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for the invitation to make a short presentation to you on the progress of the reclaiming first sports, amateur sports facility projects. Skis are back, of course, to be able to see the show on the new screens. And secondly, congratulations on what I walked in and saw the new layout with the screens for projection and very impressive. So congratulations on that. Also, I want to say thank you to Mayor Boland, the trustees, and also your staff team for all the support on this project the last six years. It's been really a labor of love, I guess, for John and I as we look back almost seven years ago when we started this process. And it's really been exciting, but it wouldn't be here, we really wouldn't be here, and we can honestly say that, without the support of almost all of the communities within Winnebago County, Winnebago County, State of Illinois, but especially all the cities that really stepped to the plate, got involved in this project and want their support, but not just their financial support, but your moral support. And your vote here was very important all along through this entire process, to have your support in what this can do for our region, not only our families, our children, our grandchildren. I know that some of you have traveling grandchildren and you're anxious to get some tournaments, especially at the downtown basketball facility, but also the huge economic impact, which we're going to cover in a little bit, what will happen to our tourism, as well as infrastructure economic impact that it's having on the areas immediately around the facilities and the 90 corridor. So I want to thank you for your past support on that. As you can see, the first slide is, of course, our 10 organizations that make up the Winnebago County Regional Tourism Facility Board. And the mayor, Boland, is your representative on that board. We meet quarterly. One of my hats that I wear as a volunteer because it's part of the state bill that was passed, which provides the 2% hotel tax dedicated to the development, operation, marketing of amateur sports facilities in our county, called for the separate board to have no expenses. So I'm the sort of the CEO of that organization. John is the assistant CEO. So we do that in our part-time to do the work of that board and at the expense of the Park District Convention and Visitors Bureau. And it's enjoyable for us because it's really a neat platform to bring the county, seven cities currently, and the Park District Convention Bureau all together at the same table every quarter to talk about our common interests and our common projects. So Mayor, thank you for your participation on that. You've been a great help there. With that, I'll turn it over to John, who's going to go through the first part of the presentation, and I'll take the second.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for the opportunity. Much of this may be a refresher or a repeat from information you've heard before, but as we get close to the opening of the facility in downtown Rockford and the expansion and opening of the fields and other amenities at Sports Core Two, I wanted to, I think it's helpful to look at where we've been before we get to where we're going. So as you may recall, back in 2009, as a regional community, we started talking about what had happened and had been happening with the impact of sports tourism in our region. We noticed that we had seen some slippage. Some other communities were building and competing more aggressively than we were keeping up. And so we set about as two organizations and then with many partners, including the village, to look at and develop an overall economic development case and master plan for sports tourism in the region to serve our citizens and their recreational needs and to increasingly bring in outside funds to grow our economy and support jobs. So we wanted to provide these amateur facilities in a world-class setting, and we wanted to retain and regain and grow the impacts of tourism again for our citizens, both their quality of life and the economic benefits. It has been seven years almost, and we've tried to summarize and remind ourselves of the collaboration that has led to where we are today and ultimately the results. And it's been a very collaborative process, a very research-driven process, where we have looked at what the market has done, where we've looked at what our community needs are, we've looked at trends in sports that our local citizens are participating in or where they might be in the future. So we were building smartly and collectively came to the conclusion of the facilities that we needed to create or expand, as well as the programming that would be happening there. It was a little over two years ago, almost two and a half years ago, that as a board here, the Village Board of Trustees voted to support, as Tim mentioned, the, one of the funding mechanisms, and that was one which allowed the county to increase its hotel tax, which pays for about 20%, I'm sorry, about a third of the overall expenses related to the expansion of Sports Core Two and the facility in downtown Rockford. The UW Health Sports Factory and created the board that Tim referenced, that is the governance board that oversees the funds of that hotel tax and now sits as a collaborative body looking at regional needs and potential new opportunities in the future. This is just a high-level overview. We often know that in your positions, you might be asked, well, how is that funded? Or where do the dollars come from? And so for both the major facilities, the UW Health Sports Factory and the Mercy Rockford Sports Core Two, indoor building and expansions, outdoors, you could see a breakdown of where funds are coming for at a high level. And of course, if you have specific questions, Tim or I would be happy to follow up with you and drill down a little bit deeper. One of our early commitments and commitment that I think we have met is to be as diverse as possible and in as many ways use other people's money to pay for these facilities that our citizens will all enjoy, from visitors who pay hotel taxes or food and beverage taxes, and as little as possible focusing on or relying on what would be considered general funds that would probably be driven by property taxes, state grants, federal pass-through grants through the State of Illinois, et cetera. Ultimately, this is about the benefits. We know that there are thousands of teams that right now are made up, thousands of youth in our region who travel externally for sports tournaments of a variety of natures, and all of those teams and individuals will have the opportunity to play at these facilities, some great collaborative partnerships between the Park District and local school districts and boys and girls clubs and others to utilize the facilities. So those are certainly quality of life benefits that we all enjoy. But then the tax benefits and the job benefits, the overall spending are very important. And as we look at the regional sort of shed of how funds are spent, we know that visitors stay and play and spend regionally. They don't just stay in Rockford and spend all their money or time in Rockford or Loves Park or Machesney Park. It does spread out, and we have seen over a number of years how that has been helpful in driving and supporting especially retail and service-based businesses in our region and the vendors and suppliers who work with those businesses. So some north of $16 million we expect to be spent and net left in our community after these facilities are onboard and are stabilized and producing a great deal of tax revenue, nearly $6 million in, I'm sorry, $16 million in revenue, $2 million in tax revenue, which of course, in these times are very important. One of the additional benefits is the spinoff or the ancillary development that comes when additional visitor dollars are coming into a community, whether that's hotel development, restaurant development, you know, support services. And we have seen throughout the county significant developments that are either underway or coming, and we believe that will continue in the years ahead. With that, I'll turn it over to Tim for some additional slides.
Thank you, John. I give you all the tough slides, John. I get the fun ones, so.
He gets to show you the pretty good.
The results, obviously, as if we look back at the last four or five years and, you know, been here to visit with you a few times and we said, all right, here's what's coming, here's what it will look like, here's what's going to happen, you know, we're on track with that journey. The facilities are well underway being built, and the next phase will be the programming. Between John's team and the Park District team, we have booked 21 tournaments right now at the downtown sports factory. Our projections were 15 year one up to 30 weekends by year three. We could have 30 weekends right now, but the 21 are all basketball. We're trying to diversify the offering so we get some volleyball, and there perhaps some wrestling, some other, some trade shows, so we have a variety of activities. But we are fully confident that we should have over 30 weekends year one by the time we open this summer. Likewise, at Sports Core Two, with the outdoor fields being a reality, and those will open this April, that we've booked, my understanding is almost 19 additional tournaments out at Sports Core Two because of those fields. We were under problems before, as we discussed over the few times I've been here to visit with you, with Sports Core One flooding on occasion. A lot of tournaments were shying away from our community, and now with the guarantee of having all-weather fields, they're back in full force. So as you can see, the downtown facility is making great progress. We'll give you some dates in a little bit, but it's, these are renderings, and you can say it looks almost exactly as the renderings do if you've been by it lately. The layout, what might remind you of the actual layout, is eight basketball courts, 16 volleyball courts, on the far left, whoops, I did it. I pushed the wrong, there we go. Thank you. On the far-left side of the screen is a new championship court, so that will have seating for about 480 individuals, many of the tournaments. A lot of the final teams like to watch the final games, so that's where those will be held. We do have a restaurant operator. We have, the word is out, so I think I can pass it along. It's been leaking out. I know they wanted to have a grand opening event, but the brew house in downtown Rockford will be taking over the restaurant inside the Sports Core or the downtown sports factory. Also in this building, with the river walk on the river, they're parking for 475 cars, so majority of the parking facility can all be on-site. That was key. All parking areas are well-lit. There's a river walk that's well-lit, and will be a facility that all of us can be very proud of, a world-class facility. And here's a recent photo of the north, four basketball, eight volleyball courts. All the equipment and nets are state-of-the-art. It's one of the few facilities in the country where everything is at a push-button. Everything comes in and out of the ceiling. Can literally change over all 16 volleyball to eight basketball and vice versa in less than five minutes. So the staff time, ongoing labor costs will be very, very small as far as that goes. There's no more taking volleyball standards out of a closet and screwing them into the floor and taking them back out. This facility can change over in a matter of minutes. The Sports Core Two facility, if you've been by there, you can see the five new artificial lighted fields, the new concession restroom building. Of course, we did purchase the half of the Aviator's parking lot, which on the project basis, the Aviator's Stadium, we will share parking with them. If we need more than the 600 cars that we have purchased, we'll use some of theirs and vice versa. We're working with the new operators of the stadium very closely. Well, that was probably about 40 cents on the dollar to do that as opposed to try to pick up additional land or use existing land to build new parking. So it was very efficient for us and effective to purchase that parking lot. And those five fields, again, the turf is completed. We'll be playing on those fields the first week in April. We'll be finishing the paths and the area around the concession restroom building in April into May, and we'll be having a dedication, we hope, sometime early in June. Tomorrow evening, the park board will be accepting the bids and awarding the bids to, right now, it's the low bidder was core construction for the, what we're calling the mega sports center at Sports Core Two. If you recall, that will provide four new indoor soccer fields, along with retrofitting the current east side of the indoor sports center into a soccer field. So we'll basically have six indoor soccer fields. Again, as you recall, all of the hard court activities will be downtown, volleyball, basketball, wrestling, cheer, anything on hard court will be downtown, and anything with turf will be at this indoor sports core and outdoor fields because of, again, the outdoor turf. So we'll have six indoor soccer floors. What that means is for no more, for trade shows or tournaments where we have to displace local teams, we can have local soccer, local, any turf sports going on at the same time we run a tournament with six fields. Also, if you recall, if you're looking at the large field, and I'm going to look for the pointer, is this the pointer? No, that's not the pointer. Anyway, the large green area is, of course, the large new building. Those curtains will come up to the ceiling.
Go ahead.
Those curtains will be able to go up to the ceiling, and we'll have one full-size soccer floor or football field or anything that can be played again on turf, whether it's rugby, lacrosse, softball. You can pick up the curtain, the long curtain that goes lengthwise with the floor, and they have two almost full-size indoor softball fields. If you recall, the ceiling is 70 feet high in the middle, inside height, 55 on the side. So you'll literally almost be able to play a full-size softball game on two fields, along with still having two other floors for soccer or other activities. So we expect to have that building full every night and every weekend with either soccer, football. Local high school teams are encouraging the coaches to be able to practice indoors. There'll be room for literally six floors. And up until in the evenings, when soccer and softball will take over, we hope all of our local high school teams will be able to be doing their seven-on-seven indoor soccer for the high school teams. We're working very closely with Harlem School District and their administration. We did help in a small way to fund the turf field at the new Harlem Stadium, which is a really neat addition. I think I want to mention to you while we're talking about that subject is, one of the benefits to, if I can go back here just for a second, to the master plan, we have six outdoor turf fields. We'll have the full-size turf field indoors, so we have seven full-size soccer fields. If we have a rainout, say in April, which we've had before, and I know I've mentioned this to you before, we lose the entire tournament. Over $1 million goes away because we lose all games. With our agreement with Harlem School District and the Rockford School District, that's three turf fields that are owned and operated by them. We will have seven, that's 10 turf fields. So if we're bringing in 300 teams in an April tournament with those 10 fields, we'll be able to salvage at least 150, maybe 200 of the teams can still come and play for the weekend. So while it won't handle 300 teams in just a weekend, we're a few fields short of that, we can handle with 10 fields. And with our agreement with Harlem and with Rockford, we'll be able to utilize those fields as rainout fields. As you recall, and I want to throw this out, that we want to thank you again for your two years that you have committed $25,000. I know that the current plan is that you review that every year, and we appreciate that. I do want to mention, and it's certainly not a criticism, that the field that you see, that's kind of a red and white line field, is the seventh field that we are not able to do, given funding. We did request $30,000 a year commitment for 20 years from Machesney and Cherry Valley. At the time, you were unable to do that, we understand that. That $1 million would build that one more field, which again, I know the question was asked last time I was here, what's that mean? What is that worth? An example of what it means is on that rainout weekend, perhaps, we could keep another 30 or 40 teams here. That's just one small way, one small thing that another field would add to our ability to host tournaments on weekends, but especially if we have inclement weather and we're not able to play on the grass. So as you continue to review your future, the budgets of the village, we certainly appreciate again the two-year commitment that you have made and would certainly ask that you continue that commitment in the future. And if there's any way that you can commit to a longer term, would give us the ability to be able to fund and build another field. We did receive, through the Illinois Association of Park Districts, an intergovernmental award, which since we had already nine governments involved in this project, it was selected as the absolute best intergovernmental project for the entire state of Illinois by the Association of Park Districts this past year, and we accepted that award on all of our behalf. And I believe you do have, we made a trophy for you to have in the trophy case. Upcoming events, we're looking at, if you recall, we had about, was it three years ago or four years ago, John? We had the, three years ago, we had the Rockford Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Luncheon inside the downtown sports factory, and it was a dungeon, it was leaky roof, leaky pipes, it was a mess, and we had two visuals up of what the vision could be for this facility. So we felt it most fitting that our grand opening will be immediately following the Rockford Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Luncheon on Wednesday, June 1. Of course, you all get an invitation. We hope you can join us that day, not only for the luncheon. Have we announced the speaker for that yet? No? Oh, go ahead.
His name's Peter Cattayama. He's the author of a book called For the Love of Cities, and has spoken around the country about why placemaking matters and how individuals, you know, who become engaged and passionate residents, loving where they live, go out of their way and find new ways to enhance their communities. And he'll be here with us partnering with Transform Rockford for our luncheon and also for community conversations and other venues over a few-day period. So we're looking forward to him and the luncheon, ultimately the ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting at 1:30. So we hope you can all join us for that. Put that in your calendar, but we'll be sending out something official very soon. And then also, as soon as we get the outdoor fields at the Mercy Sports Core Two facility ready, we want them pretty well-done, which will be sometime late May, early in June. Watch for that date. We'll have a dedication of those fields and maybe combine that with a groundbreaking, given the fact the park board approving the bids tomorrow night for the indoor building. And then that building will be done in about 14 or 15 short months, which will be the final piece for now of the reclaiming first projects. But we don't want to rest on our laurels for sure. We found that when we did that since 2002, in 2008, we were already falling behind. So I'm sure John and I will take a deep breath on May of 2017 and say, all right, now, how do we continue to improve, reach a higher top so that we keep these facilities not only in pristine condition, but competitive across the nation and the world as far as amateur athletic facilities? So with that, you can, we only made enough copies tonight for the council, the Save Trees and the Inc. and all those things to be conservative, but you can download this presentation or see it on the Park District website if anyone would like to. Questions?
I have a comment. If anyone has not been downtown to see that facility or the Sports Core Two, please get out and take time to see it. It's really awesome.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mayor. We are doing regular tours at the downtown facility.
Correct. Once a month, I believe the next one is on the first week of April, I think it's the fifth or the sixth, I'm sorry, I'm not getting it here. But there are public tours. Interested individuals can call our office at the Visitors Bureau at 963-8111. We'll get to the time. There's one in April, there'll be one in May for anybody in the community to see. They've been well-attended over the last several months and have been a great opportunity to showcase the project and show the construction and celebrate with the community what collectively we've accomplished so far. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say, thank you for coming out and giving us that update. I know everyone is appreciative of these sorts of updates. It's been a percolating effort on both of your parts and, of course, the whole group. And I know it's been a long time coming from vision to actualization and where you're at now. So it's very timely. We're in the middle of our budget workshops, and we'll be adopting that by May 1. So again, thanks for coming out, and it's very informative.
Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you. Thank you again for your support. Mr. Moore, go ahead.
Thank you. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration Finance Committee met and viewed and approved warrants totaling $1,128,676.43, and I move for their passage.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion or changes? I see none. Would clerk take roll call?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lori. The warrants have been approved. Next, we have administrative reports, and I like to bring it to attention under new business. There are two ordinances on the table, so if you will turn to new business. The first one is ordinance 09-16 ZMA R1 to R2, multiple lots at Silo Ridge, first reading is on the table. I'll entertain a motion to take that off the table.
Summit. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Has been removed from the table. Next is ordinance 10-16, variance, side yard setback, six foot to zero inches, multiple lots, Silo Ridge, first reading. That is on the table. I entertain a motion to take that off the table.
Summit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both of these items have been removed from the table and now is active. And now I want to have your attention that I will remove ordinance 09-16 Any opposed? Both of these items have been removed from the table and now is active. And now I want to have your attention that I will remove ordinance 09-16 and ordinance 010-16 from our board agenda this evening. Thank you. The reason for removing that is the applicant has removed it and declined to move it forward. I have a couple things this evening. I had a Facebook comment from Karen Robison. That's Samantha Robison's mother. This last weekend, she was the House Ambassador child for Ronald McDonald in Chicago, so I'll just read what she posted. "Our Samantha spoke in front of over 800 people last night. She got a standing ovation when she walked on stage. To say her daddy and I are proud of her would be an understatement. Over $200,000 were raised just at the tables after she spoke. So many people came to speak to her and their words of kindness and extra giving because of sitting with her and getting to know her was unbelievable to me." So we'd just like to say, thank you, Sam, for also being the ambassador of Machesney Park, and we really appreciate what you're doing out there. The last board meeting, Administrator Tim Savage noted that the Winnebago County Highway Department had did a study on Harlem Road, speed study, traffic signal, and for the lights, and the traffic signal warrant analysis for the intersection of Harlem Road and Victory Lane. The results of that was, the analysis of recent traffic data indicates that a reduction of the speed limit is not warranted. The traffic signal warrant analysis based on the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices 2009 indicates that traffic signals are warranted. He also stated that we had three options. The first option was that we, the village, can install the traffic signal through our own funding resources, and the county will issue a permit to install on our highway. We would be willing to provide the design and construction engineering, meaning the county. The second option was to enter into an agreement with Winnebago County, proportionately reimburse the village of the county's leg of the intersection in installments in the future as funding becomes available. And then the third option, the village of Machesney Park can lead agency to apply for the installation of traffic signals at a safety project under Highway Safety Improvement Program, or HSIP, Project IDOT. Construction costs for an approved HSIP project typically would be funded up to 90% from the federal funding. The remaining 10% match would be from the local agency. The local funding can be shared equally, 5% each by Machesney Park and 5% by Winnebago County. Winnebago County would be willing to provide preliminary, perhaps, construction engineering services, assuming that they would be credited to us or them against our share of the construction or their share of the construction. So with those options that I've looked at, I've given the green light to IDOT to move forward, but option three, to pursue a federal grant at 90%. The estimated cost of that intersection for the lights would be roughly $300,000. I have put together five individuals that have agreed to join an ad hoc committee for the village of Machesney Park to beautify the village. So this evening, I'm presenting five names to the board, and I will ask for your approval at the next meeting, March 21st. Those individuals are trustee Steve Johnson, Jeanne Bailey, Natalie Bader, Ron Foss, and Next, we have attorney Green.
No report tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Next, we have Harlem High School student, Laissant Nick McCormick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow, we have the Vision 2020 Parents and Community Session, which is going to be where the board listens to some parents and some of the people in the community to kind of see what they want out of the school, the school and the school district in the coming years. Today was the first day for any outdoor spring sports to begin, and the Winnebago County State Scholar Recipient List was released this week, and Harlem has over 20 members on that list. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have village engineer Chris Dopkins.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have public safety supervisor Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The bi-monthly police report, which covers from February 12th through March 3rd, there were 1,235 calls for service in the village, 337 reports taken with 613 arrests. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Bushman. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning and Economic Development Committee met this evening, and will be putting four items onto the March 21st board meeting with positive recommendations.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Are there any more reports? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration Finance Committee met, reviewed and approved warrants, and two resolutions, which will go with a positive recommendation to the March 21st board meeting. And secondly, another issue, I'd like to thank Tim Savage and Michelle Johansson for kind of catching me up to date, because I've been out of town a little bit. So I wasn't caught off guard when I come to this meeting tonight, so I want to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beck. Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank James Richter and Tim Savage. We met a little bit, talked a little about the beautification ideas, and I thought that was very informative. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Are there any more reports? I see none. Next, we have the consent agenda. Will the staff please present all items under the consent agenda for the record?